Work reach on Friday morning.
Special meeting in Warrick City Council, all rise and say in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their covenant for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alrighty. While the silent cell phone, so no interruptions. So this meeting has been placed on agenda, allow councilmen and staff to participate in the meeting via teleconference pursuant to government's order N twenty-nine twenty. Hope you're limited access to the city council chambers at this time, mask and physical distancing, will is encouraged. During this call, you may press, there's anybody on the call, is there, Arthur? We have any, huh? Nobody on the call, so.
Is that monitor now working? Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
That's alright.
Or Mercy Mayor. Had to pull that one on you.
Alright.
Greatest kids author in the world.
This is a time for public comments, member of the public may have right to address the city council in order to speak their opinion regarding issues within the jurisdictions in the city council. At all regular meetings, special meeting, council meetings, please speak from the podium when you're addressing the city council, please state your name. For the record, prior to providing the comments, please address the council as a whole. Council may ask questions, but may take no action during the public comments section of this meeting, except to direct staff to prepare or place on a future agenda. If you're hearing this comment on a specific item, agenda item, you may speak this time or not. This is the time, please limit your remarks to five minutes. Alright, is there any public comments this time? Move on to number one, discuss impossible action consent calendar, all matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted in one motion unless the member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion or members, member of the audience wishes to comment on item, the city manager recommends approval of following consent calendar items. A approval of minutes of special meeting held July twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. Any questions, faultless, if not, then all.
I'll make the motion to accept the minutes of the special meeting, twenty-second day of July, twenty twenty-one, as noted.
Okay. Motion, second, I'll second, maybe second. Roll call. Note that as of right now, Joan Smith Freeman is absent. Paul McCoy.
Aye.
Cora Middleton.
Aye.
Debbie Barrett.
Aye.
Dwayne Keg.
Aye.
Alrighty, now we move on to number two, discussion possible direction, update the re- and review of the city project list by the city manager and department heads on consideration of alternative directions. Alright, do you want to start off with that one, or who do we want to start off with?
May I just ask of the council a couple things, because you have received the draft flyer on the city manager recruitment. If you would, if you have comments, or anything in that do you want to change, I have already suggested a couple changes, and I'm going over those with department heads.
Oh, good.
Okay, so, but I want to get that back to the recruiter as soon as possible, as we recall, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I'm just.
There was a concern at one point in time that he was dragging his heels, I want to make sure we're not. So if I don't hear from you later today, by tomorrow I'll be calling you.
Okay.
So we can get it back.
Yes.
Acceptable.
Oh, that's awesome, no, thank you, thank you, is that acceptable to council, sounds like you want to get things rolling, so I think that's good.
Yeah, I just don't want them, him to, I, I don't want to concede that lack of preparation or doing things on his part constitutes an emergency on our part.
True.
So, you know, just because he drags his feet, doesn't mean, you know, I don't want him to come to us and say, hey, I gotta have it right now, it's like, no, get your S together.
Good, good point, and a point that's well taken, that hopefully we, well, if we get our part going real soon, then there's no excuse for him then.
To not do it, yes, absolutely. I'm in agreement.
I'd like to say it in a more positive way. It's just, yeah, if we do our part, then we expect him to do his part.
Yes.
But let's start by doing our part.
Yep, yes, absolutely.
Alright.
And that's pretty much my report, I, you've assigned me other things, and most of those things have been assigned to department heads.
Right.
It's on their list, they'll be providing reports on it.
Okay.
Randy, did you send that to me? For the flyer, did you send it from your email?
I'm sorry.
Did you send the email to me as well, from you? The flyer for the.
For the. So flyer, yes, it was sent by Arthur?
Yep.
Okay, and if you didn't get it, I'll get you a copy before we leave here. I think it was sent last Friday.
Yeah.
I think that's right.
I looked at it.
Oh, wait, no. I got it. Well, no, I looked at it, but it disappeared, but I found it.
Thank you. Alrighty, good, we'll get, get started, who wants to be the first batter up?
You can take it in the order they're presenting.
That would be the planning department. Oh, whoops, I missed some?
Yep.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Swing you under the proverbial fire.
Yeah, that's right.
The fire chief was the first one to get his list to the city manager.
Hey, kudos for Jerry. Good job, good job, Jerry.
Alright, Mr. Mayor, member of the council. I hastily, but basically there was kind of narrowed down a lot of the stuff that we had going on to these four major topics. And number one, the fire station, new fire station, we've been talking about that for quite a while. So, as you're aware, the planning grant has been submitted, and we're waiting to hear back on that, it's probably going to be a few more weeks, I don't know. I listen, yeah, it's going to be a pretty long process, so we haven't heard anything yet on that. It is competitive, so we're keeping our fingers crossed, but I thought it would be helpful to discuss at least, or have a time to discuss, you know, other locations besides, and I've been saying that ShopSmart location is something, is geographically, it's the best location for where the volunteers are located currently. But there's other ones that could work as well. Possibly the A-one automotive building, former A-one automotive, I think it's Ron Row, is that the one?
I think it's Ron Row, yeah.
Yeah.
So, but I think we're in the same, same boat as far as cost, and we're probably pretty close to the ShopSmart location. One that probably wasn't on the original list, well, one of them on, right next to Stedham down the road, there was, I think it was Jeanette Hook's property that sold somebody else, I thought that might have been a possible location too. And then instead of, instead of tracks, former Stedham, it's a possible location. There haven't been a whole lot of them that are any, you know, any closer to where we are located currently, so that's the difficult part, as far as the planning grant was to be awarded, one of the things we would do would be to do a formal time study to see response signs, what they would be from, you know, different locations. So, makes sense, though, during the middle of the day, as you all know, it's pretty hard to get around in town if you don't have license sirens, and sometimes that doesn't help either. So, having said that, there's.
Let me just interrupt for a second, one of the first things the consultant will do once you get going is do an evaluation of suggested sites and other sites for compliance with state law, is, is an essential use classified building? And that's very tough to meet those requirements, so we can certainly talk, and Jerry and I were talking about it sites. But until that part of the study is done, everything is just works. So, yeah, we're hoping to get that done, and then, once we know what sites can be built and meet the requirements of essential use there at state law, then you have more to go by. So, he's really handicapped, there's not much he can do on this.
Right, thank you for, yeah, we can discuss that, my apologies for not following the, what we had discussed in detail, so, yeah, he's exactly correct, so. And that is, I was, I had that same conversation with another gentleman, another firefighter that I know that does studies for Chico, so, that's exactly, exactly correct. So, anyway, those, that's where we're at currently, and I think you've been updated on that so far, so if you have any questions or comments on that, I'm glad to hear them, but that's, that's where we're at.
Um, okay, so, I know it's early in the game, and we have a lot of stuff going on, but in the event that the location ends up being on your first choice of ShopSmart, because it's on Highway Three, where I'm going with this is that some of the other larger cities that I've been in, they actually have an emergency stop signal in front of their fire departments, so all, all traffic ceases for the situation. My little red flag that's going off is, it's a shame we can't get an answer before the streets go in, so that we can have it all done at the same time.
Same thing with the Warrick Outlands building, they're both on, they're both on, so we, yeah, if we were looking at either of those two, which we are, we need times of the essence.
Yeah, I think Joan has something to comment on that.
Oh, I was just going to say that it's.
I'm done, thank you.
I'm sorry, Debbie. Be sure, okay, I apologize, I didn't mean to step on you, I just wanted to say. Mayor Keg and I met with Caltrans on Friday, and it's not too late, it's approaching it, but if we do, if we did negotiate something, if we were able to get a building on Highway Three, it's not too late, you know, to put something in, but we would have to advance it quickly.
This is a scheduled meeting with Caltrans?
Yes. Yes, it is, with, with the mayor and I, there could only be two.
Did anybody else, I was gonna say, did any of the other council?
There could only be two council members.
Oh, you guys knew, you were advised in, in advance.
Yes. And as well as the city manager, but he couldn't be there.
Okay.
Well, only two members could be there.
I mean, that's not what I asked.
But we're also.
I asked if, if we could advise in advance.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Could you let them know that, could you let them know the date that we have arranged for all the council members to have the meeting with?
So this is what I was actually going to talk with Randy about this morning, which I didn't actually make it that far.
Right. Right.
I think this will be a separate topic, but anyways, we'll just, we'll clarify that right now, that on.
Yes, the, the meeting you attend was, as I understand the title, beautification issues, not.
Right.
Correct.
Function, that's true.
And, and this has been a series of meetings that have been attended by gentlemen, whoever. The other issue on the fire department, those items you're talking about, we can assume at this moment in time that those will be required for the fire department building to meet the requirements of essential use.
Oh, thank you.
So. Yeah. If the city wants to spend money, not waiting for the grant to get architect, engineer, or whoever is the appropriate person to do that preliminary work, you know, we can certainly come up with an RFP, we'll steal it from some other city.
All right.
Tailor to this city, and then get you some idea of what it would cost to begin this right away, but, you know, there's a long list of projects that you're going to hear today, certainly a fire station is important, so this.
That's number one.
Yeah.
But could it be included in the grant or the loan, rather than coming out of general funding?
Or whatever other source.
Okay.
That may be available, I, I don't, I'd have to ask finance if there are other sources for it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, this is.
My understanding is, yes, that the Caltrans meetings are a series of meetings that most of us have been to. Okay, yeah, we just said they were a series of meetings, yes, they are. My understanding from Caltrans is that once the highway goes in, there will be no changes, so that is why, if we, my concern, as with Debbie's, is that if we are going to do something on Main Street, wherever it is, that that needs to be done in the next, that needs to be to Caltrans probably by October, November.
Yeah.
We need to notify them of that, so we don't have the luxury of study time right now, if we're going to be on Main, if we're going to be like at Stedham, or we were going to be over on South Foothill, it's no big deal, but, but the, but the Caltrans is.
I mean, I understand that argument.
So, so are you, are you recommending then that we go ahead and wait for the study as city manager, are you recommending that we?
I, I really don't have enough information, but from what you're saying, I would certainly recommend that it be done now. If that's all the information we have.
So the time is, you know, is basically of the essence, if we go back to, to the meeting on Caltrans on Friday, there was basically based off of beautification, if this is correct, beautification projects going, that we're looking at as a city, and they're going to present this, the meeting, and I, you know, I told you, Joan, that they set up your update on that, the, so the, the meeting that they're proposing to coordinate everything, it's August nineteenth. And that will be.
At this moment in time, what I'm hearing, I think, is consensus on the council, that we should bring you back at the next meeting as soon as we're whatever mood we can have it for, is what it would take to get this movement.
Correct, as far as, yeah, as far as what you're talking about, yeah, and the next Caltrans meeting is, is on August ninth, is what they're proposing for that, but yes, we can bring that back soon.
And I can ask Matt to contact whoever the appropriate person is at Caltrans with a question too, he's here, he understands, and so he can find out what's available, not a visit. My understanding from the most, what was on Main Street, you would just have some painted lines with, you know, don't stop here, don't park here, and that kind of thing, so the engine seem to get in and out, plus the flashing light. Beyond that, I don't know that there'd be much else.
And there, there's likely some other potential requirements that Caltrans would have being a state highway, but I'm not, I'm not familiar with those.
Yeah, but you have to have two ways in and out, so that, that's just Main Street. What happens on the other streets, they probably don't care about, but we will.
Yeah, we will.
We can ask that question of somebody who designs fire departments.
Well, I would assume that the units, the large units are not going out on Fourth Street, because it's not, they'd have to back out if they're pulling through, and you don't usually back out to go to fire station. Yeah.
I heard that a lot from fire chiefs, but I know those engines have. They use it when they need to get out.
Well, to take, to take, to take a, a medical, an EMS team out.
Yeah.
They would just swing a U and go back out that way, but to take out a ladder truck, it's gonna have.
Well, if you have, if you have pull-throughs, you can, you can, when you place the apparatus back in the station, and say, for instance, in that, you'd probably just face it the other way.
Right.
Or, you know, depending on what you have going up, and it, it's, it's one of those that, it's, you know, kind of by, by design or by committee, if you will, to decide what works best, so. But you're right, that would be easier to go out.
And the architect, you know, can really pin this down, but I've seen stations where they park one engine going out this way, the other engine, you know.
Yeah.
And it just depends on what they are and what you need from the call, but if you want us to bring that back as quickly as we can.
I think, does the rest of council agree that we need to bring this back ASAP?
Yep. Okay. What, August nineteenth at what time?
So, six-thirty August nineteenth, it was our scheduled homeless meeting, but that was the only way we could coordinate it as quick enough time with them.
It's a full council meeting, it's a council meeting, so it will be.
Special meeting.
It will not be a planning session, this is a council meeting.
That's correct.
It's a special. Just want to clarify.
Yep, not a, not a workshop, it's a special meeting.
Uh, because Mayor Freeman Smith, I do nothing about the, uh, the meeting, the, uh, with Caltrans. And I've been to other meetings, you know, I've been.
No, I know you have, but, but the mayor expressed an interest in being there, there can only be two of us there.
Understand.
Uh, and Steve and I had been to previous meetings, he went to one, and then we had the special meeting up at, at the community center. This was, uh, taking a look at beautification specifically at Minor Street and Center, but, you know, we discussed.
A lot.
A lot about it.
So I'm saying, based on that, you just chose not to, to let us know.
No, I did let, I did let people know.
No, I was never made aware.
No, I, I did let people.
No, you did not.
Yeah.
I think there was a little bit of miscommunication, I was never made aware of it, so.
On the item in front of you.
Yes.
Which is, we will bring back something as soon as we can, but obviously, that's dependent on getting information from other than us, so we'll do that as we can, and I'll have Matt ask Caltrans people
Yeah.
what they need in order to incorporate it as a possibility in their plans.
Yeah, solid degree.
Does that work?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, because like you said, time is of the essence.
Right.
From what we were told then, with the beautification part of it.
Right.
As we're looking at October is basically a deadline, so.
October to November, right.
November is like at the max.
November is late.
Part of that beautification was, that would be pushing it from what they were saying, so, and that's why we, we want to, that's why we're bringing back for these.
Right.
These meetings, it'll be back for everybody's.
Oh, yeah.
Clear where, so we'll make sure.
My, my only thing, it would be nice if that was brought up at a meeting, and, you know, and, and I'm sure if we look back in the minutes, we're not going to find that.
Yeah, I think there was.
I think there was some miscommunication there.
I think so, yeah, I think it was one of those things, because Steve, like you said, Steve went to the last one, and now we've had a change of, change of command, so I think there was just a little miscommunication, so I think we'll work that out. Debbie, you had a comment?
Yes, I'm actually very comfortable with the LTC representative and the mayor being the lead on anything to do with Highway Three, it just makes sense to me. So, I'm good with that.
Thank you.
Even moving forward, but when it allows for the rest of the council, you'll let us know?
Oh, yeah, and that's where the August nineteenth comes in, because it's now they, we narrow down our options to these, to these beautification things, and now that these auctions will be presented to the council, and we'll move forward. But the reason why we're even bringing this up is because that was a conversation at this meeting Yes. of the fire station, and being able to move forward at that location, so.
Yes, Mr. McLeary. And, and Councilwoman Barrett, I agree with you, but I would like more communication.
Yeah.
I would like it to be out there in a meeting, not something that I find out later about.
Right.
And I, that's what I would like.
And I agree.
As Mr. Mayor.
Yes, I think we got that cleared up, August nineteenth, six-thirty, replacing the homeless meeting, so we all know that, replacing that meeting. Unfortunately, one meeting for another meeting, which, I think it makes everybody happy, but it's, it's something we have to move forward on, sorry. Alright, Mr. Lemus, sorry.
Item two, or, yeah, item two, and this, this is pretty obvious, but an ongoing recruitment of volunteers, that's been doing pretty well, I have three or four in the queue right now that are, we just got one, Mr. Mr. Kendall, and you guys saw him a while back, and he's, hasn't even been able to make a call, he's been out on fire with, with CalFire, he's on an engine, so. That was one, and we have, like I say, we had, you know, man, a team last night's training, and I've got a couple more that are on fires too, that are, you know, likely candidates, so hopefully we can boost up again before, you know, before winter comes, we can get those folks off the fire, and we'll have, you know, a good amount of people to take care of the other calls during the winter time, so, so that's been going well, and we have some other ideas amongst the volunteers to, you know, try to get a few more, there are, they've all been out, got their feelers out, talking to people, so, that, that actually has been going pretty well, so. And any questions or concerns on that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or listen to anything.
I do have a question, now, Mr. Mayor, thank you, this is Councilmember Joan Smith Freeman. So, recruitment of volunteers, so how many volunteers do we have now, and how many more do you need?
Well, we're at nineteen now, and to be honest, due to the fact that we do have some that, as you know, Tim Shaw is going to retire from the city, and, you know, he's going to hang around and do the fire thing for a while, so, but you never know, Carl Barrett's got a lot of years in, you know, and so we have to just keep, how many do you need? As many as you need when, when the worst possible thing happens, I mean, sometimes it's, sometimes you just hope you have the right ones there, some of your best, you know, that are more experienced, but the more that you have, the better, the better prepared you can be as far as training goes, so, we don't really have a number. We're allowed, I think, in the, in the charter to have, you know, forty or fifty, but those days, we're not going to see again, but I'd be really satisfied if we had twenty-five. I'd be really happy with that, but, you know, I don't think I would stop there if there were people wanting to volunteer, because it's a small price to, you know, to pay for getting longboarded and having to get in some gear if they're here, because, you know, there's some that are here, there, we're not here all at the same time, that's the hard part. So, and that's always been the case, so, yeah, to, to define a number, that's pretty hard to do, I mean, I'm just throwing twenty-five out there as a, something better than what we have now, but, but not out of the realm of possible.
I was just curious.
Yeah, no, that's the best. Um, the others, okay, so number three, as far as the water tender goes, and that's been a pretty quick project, because we didn't back to be able to get it, the one we wanted, hit a little bit of the snag yesterday on that, just based on some design features for the, what's called the deck gun, so, we're going to work that out, like, we're likely just going to put a cap on the, on the riser, and call it good, and get it up here for the fire season, and it's not anything that we need right now, it just happened to come with it, but there was some design flaw they found that was, we weren't aware of, so, I'll get you, keep you updated on that, we're expecting to have it by the end of the week, but that may or may not, may or may not happen, so. But it's, it's pretty much ready to go, or they're finalizing the pre-delivery inspection as we speak, so, it should happen here real soon, and then you'll know as soon as it's ready to come, and we'll come by and give you, give you a show. I don't, it'll be, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna have it here to, to show you, but it'll be nice to have that in service and available to the, to the city, and to the residents nearby for every, any kind of fire, but especially the weather.
Yeah.
And the last one I have on my list today is the cost recovery, which I haven't spoke to you a lot about, but it is, I think it's vitally important, because over the years, we've always just go to a traffic accident, sometimes a negligent fire, and repeat medical aids, which gets into the, kind of the weeds there, so. For traffic accidents, we've, I've done it before, especially on the highway where there's a diesel spill, we've recovered some, some funds there from the responsible parties, but there is a program, and I have a handout here for you guys, just have a room while you're listening to me, yeah, yeah. Just gives a real quick breakdown, but in Redd's Spare Time, I'm just looking at it, pretty rare, we discussed. It's in her report too, so. You know what it is, that there's a company, there are more than one, that offers a service to go out and help, help you recover your costs that you've incurred on different incidents, and it's something where you need to basically get an ordinance drafted and approved. That way you can, you have legal standing to go ahead and, and recover costs for, for instance, you go out, you have staff time, and you have absorbent materials that you use to sweep up the oil and antifreeze and things like that, that are still as a result of the traffic. So, it costs money to replace those, so the idea is, and, and by and large, most insurance companies already have that in, in someone's policy for traffic accidents to, to pay the fire department for response.
I see that on the business card, it's out of Washington, so do they work the whole West Coast so that they know?
Yes, as you may recall, in months past, when I spoke about this, Chief, the MPD from Dunbar, they use them. I believe Weed City uses the same outfit, and they're really happy with them, and they bring in tens of thousands of dollars based on their, you know, how many calls they get, you know, how many act, they actually, and they, and not every insurance company is going to pay, I know they mentioned a few that, you know, don't need to be named here, but they're notorious, they're not paying, so, you're going to have, you know, a percentage of some, you're going to collect from, some that you're not, but it's better than not doing anything at all, because there is a cost incurred at the city, and we want to try to recoup that, and it's, it's done all the time.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry, yes.
May I ask him a question? Okay, Chief Lemus, and, and maybe this is in Redd's report as well, but in your opinion, what's the recovery rate, are we really low on recovery?
Much.
Well, you said that we need to have, we need to have it codified into ordinance, and we need a resolution for recovery, right? This recovery of the cost, right, correct? Okay, what's, what's our rate of recovery, in other words, are we getting?
I really haven't been billing all that, like, for instance, since that, I think we got back eight hundred dollars, or nine hundred dollars out of about eleven hundred we could have on that diesel spill. And we hadn't pursued any, any additional, and I thought that was, you know, that was, we use the rates based on our contract with CalFire as, you know, for firefighters and personnel, and that's what I think we're done, kind of had an issue with, because I talked to him about it, our city attorney. And so he was, he wanted to get involved and basically get to the point where we had, we had a codified, so we recovered, which is what you have to do by resolution and ordinance, so, as far as the numbers that we've built out for, we haven't been bringing any, because a lot of times it's traffic accident, and you're, you're worried about getting all the street clear, and it takes some doing to go out and get the bin numbers and track all the information down, and it's, and then have the time to have somebody send it out, so with this, they keep a small percentage of the cost, and then we get, we get the remainder, which, like I said, Dunbar did pretty well over, over the years, you know, fifty to sixty thousand. A period of time, it wasn't all in one year.
And they're right on I five, too.
They get a lot of calls on I five, like we do, so, yeah, it's a good program, I mean, it's not, what you'd have to decide is whether, as a department, as a city, do we want to charge our own citizens, if they're in a traffic collision in town, or do we want to charge folks for excess medical response, things like that, to get, they can get a little stick, you know, so, that's something. that's something we'll have to work on, and that's, that's easily done, we can eliminate, you know, the ones we don't, you know, as far as having to charge those folks or target and pay the consequence, or, you know, or deal with that. But most of the time, the insurance companies are well aware of that clause in their
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I just said, thank you.
Oh, Mr. McCallum.
Yes, Jerry, so it it is something, you sup- you support the concept, you support the idea, and after talking to people, you, you are, have heard positive things about this company?
Yes.
Okay.
And there's, there's others that we could research if we want to pick some, but I, I haven't had the time to do that yet, this was one that I believe I, I can't remember if he contacted me or I contacted him, and this gentleman was passing through and dropped those off, so. And that's something I'd, I'd have no problem, we should do that, I think it'd be wise to do that, to look at some others.
I would then, Mr. Mayor, like to see us proceed with getting an ordinance. I would like it done in a timely fashion, I don't mean two weeks, but I don't mean six months or a year.
Right.
If the attorney needs to write in a timely fashion.
Yeah, so, I guess, yeah, I'd like to see, keep continuing on with working with Don and try to figure out where that next step would be.
Right.
And see, Mr. Manager, would, if that's you, that be a proper direction to have a move forward on that?
The, the direction would be to have the manager work with the attorney and the fire chief and provide more for this.
Okay.
With what you have, and a lot of fees and charges that cities have historically charged are based on an ordinance provision or a resolution that's a hundred years old. And what Don is repeatedly saying is this needs to be updated to be compliant with state law.
Makes sense.
So the answer is to get an ordinance to do what I think he's saying we're going to do. We'll call another city who's already done it, and then have Don review it and get it before you.
I have examples, by the way.
Okay, I was just lost when you said you had examples of resolutions, but you didn't say ordinance, but we have the ordinance. And the other thing, we have other fees and charges that staff has been talking with me about, that also will require an ordinance revision, and hopefully not delaying it too much, but maybe we could bring that all back at one ordinance, it does have to be.
Gotcha, that makes sense.
Repeat, yeah.
Yeah, great.
But we'll have to work with that, so that will require some city attorney time.
That'd be great, yeah, soon, better get some money coming in, I'm sure, because you got to figure, there's also the other part of the law enforcement side of it, too, that's, you know, they get involved on a lot of these, like you said, accidents and stuff, so there's that staff time that goes into money involved, we could recoup, so, yes, thank you.
Jerry, when you talk about local versus, you know, outside, is there a way that perhaps if we choose not to do local, that we could have something in the ordinance, and I guess it would just be you for frequent flyers? Because I know we've got some frequent flyers, I know there are people that you'll go out three times on a, you've gone out three times in a day.
Yeah.
And never, and never, you know, never had to transform, but it's just a.
Yeah, although some of those were addressed in examples that I had, which, not to get too deep into it, but they were, i.e. care facilities, so. And that was addressed.
And I'm not asked, I'm not asked for, I'm just food for thought.
Right. Anyway. Yeah, any, any other questions on cost recovery, and let everybody else move on with their, I guess I have to be the first one.
I like that.
You can leave now, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're going to move on to Liz.
Okay, I wasn't really sure what direction you guys wanted for me with planning, we work on an application basis, and since you are the appeal process, the applications I have on deck, I can't really tell you much about, because you can have to decide if anybody appeals it, so I provided you with a fourth quarter report, looking back to see what we've done since our last quarter. I know you guys all pay attention to our planning agenda, we already know all this stuff, so I mean, let me remind you. I also included, again, the update we had on our grant, those are some of the projects we're doing, they're not fun and exciting like the other departments, because they're all manuals and paper, but they're required by law. So I don't know if you guys have any questions, what are you looking for from planning? We do have one huge project, but it's your project, not mine, I think Councilman Barrett let me down. We need a new community development director, and we haven't had, we haven't had positive responses so far.
The person decided to stay where he was, I'm sorry.
Both of them did.
I was going to say, did you look?
So many of them, so, you know, we've got some big plans with that position, but we need your guys' help, you guys have to find some people who might be interested, I, I don't, like I said, I'm not sure what direction you're looking for, I can give you what's on deck for the August Planning Commission meeting, because those are, those are public, so we've got a new Mexican restaurant with fifty seats going in on West Minor Street, the old Tyler Stationery Store, oh, yeah, it's Esperanza's nephew, I believe, don't know, we can't say.
Oh, awesome.
And finally, after years, we've got the Liquorland project, Manny Sidhu on the north end of town, he's down scaled, they consider late, but we're finally ready to go, so those are on, are on the Planning Commission's agenda for August eighteenth. On deck for September, we've got the credit union assigned use permit, which, I don't know what kind of a timeline they're going to.
Which one, credit union?
The credit union, assigned use permit to expand their.
Credit union would like to open on October twenty-second.
Fabulous.
That, that would be the scheduled time, but it couldn't be later.
So John Richter, who had had a site plan approved for a car wash back in March, has advised us that he's going to amend his site plan and at some point get his plans, and he wants to start construction by October. So if you hear from John Richter, I still haven't got any plans, let alone the building department, but we're hoping that's going to fly.
Which project is that?
It's car wash, we approved it back in March, slash and dash.
He wants to move, I'm sorry.
Arby's also plans to start construction.
He's saying he wants to move the site.
Oh, okay.
No, he's keeping the site, he wants to flip the site plan.
Oh.
So when you do that, there's drainage, you know, there, there are things we have to have on the site plan, and we have to have approved, as you will know, Mayor Cake, we have to have approved plans, stand by the engineer, so it's going to be a process.
Liz, you mentioned, will that be, will that, will that be required to use recycled water, or or probably not?
Yes, and and that was all in the conditional use permit, it's, it's a, it's, it's not called, there's another phrase for it, matter. It's something about recirculated, something, but yes, that California has laws that it must follow. So, so Harbor Freight and Goodwill hoping to open in October? Other than that, like I said, we've got, we've got lots of them that are, that are pending in discussion, but I can't really bring it to public view until I've got an application going, so do you guys have any questions? What direction, what are you looking to receive from me?
Well, I think, I don't know, most of it, I think, was, yeah, keep us updated.
So we've got that format of the quarterly reports, that kind of gives you how many permits and what we did, and then I thought I'd give you the grant again, because maybe it got lost on June fifteenth, when we brought it to you before, but those are the projects. We've got those grant funds, and they're helping us do paper.
Yeah.
It's nothing exciting like a fire hall.
Well, I think a lot of it, too, was, with this meeting in mind, period, was a combination to update us, obviously update Randy, which, which you guys kind of know have been doing in the backseats anyways, but updating, you know, update him on a lot of stuff, but for us to get these updates, and then if we have, just like we're doing, have any questions, and we can direct it to Randy to, to move forward on anything, or to ask questions on it, or whatever, so I think it was just kind of a community type thing, I don't know if there's specifically anything, I don't know, we'll ask the rest of council, I don't, I don't specifically have anything to ask you at this point in time, but this was just, I think, more of a public, you know, thing where everybody can be on the same sheet of music and know what's going on, and then if we need to move forward on something, just like what we just discussed with the fire station, the fire hall, to move forward on that, so.
One note on that, Randy and I, we should check the zoning, because a couple of those sites aren't zoned, but we, we can work that out.
Yeah. Yeah, I was just wondering about that, too.
Yeah.
Yes.
We end up with an architect, engineer, whoever's going to sign the building.
Yes, yes, yeah, they'll, they'll, they'll know to check the zone.
All right, council, is there any questions for Liz?
No.
Well, let me know if there's any changes or anything, or let Randy know, and he can let me know.
I just think it's great that we have an update, because we get asked, you know, as roundabout when this opening, what's going on here, we heard this, so it's good to know.
Up until a week ago, I'd been meaning, I was going to call you, I couldn't figure out what was going into the old Aetna Tap House.
Oh, that's.
Chris is going there at Hair Salon, I thought, which one of my councilmembers could tell me that?
Months ago.
She's opening up a hair salon now.
Oh, a hair salon, I had heard it was a restaurant. I thought it was a restaurant.
We've heard, we've heard several rumors.
The guy got, because he looked at the liquor, wanted to buy the liquor license only for Brandon and I, and then he backed, he decided not to, because of COVID, and then he got nervous about opening a restaurant, and then the city made it, and then he was approached, and then he
Oh.
It was supposed to be a cool little restaurant, like a good.
Well, right across the street, there will be a cool little Mexican restaurant, fifty seats.
Fifty, wow.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, there was a rumor, Supervisor Cupsa called me and asked me about the new Home Depot going in across from Rayleigh's, and I immediately talked to Liz, and she said news to me, which is what I told Michael, news to me, I like the idea, but
The Siskiyou Daily News also carried a story that our, our temporary homeless camp is going on military.
Yeah.
Because I've gotten calls on that already, I've gotten four calls on that.
Oh.
That Bill wrote an article and had a picture in there, that he kind of jumped the gun.
Definitely, definitely on that, I'm going to have a conversation with them tonight about that, so.
The, the thing I think I would like you to take away from that report is, number one, Liz is alive and well and working.
Yeah.
And, you know, there's a lot of current planning going on, but she's also listed, and with some grant opportunities, some future planning that needs to be done, and all that will probably be done with your new planner, so there's already a worklist being put together for them, so hopefully she and Scott can initiate the work on some of this before the new plan starts. The transition is happening.
Thank you, Liz.
And if you decide to change your mind at any time.
It's okay.
I have, I have been putting the word out, nobody feels like they can follow in your footsteps.
This is true.
I, I think, well, we would be well served if that happened. From my limited exposure.
If she changed her mind, yeah. Thirty-three years, what's thirty-three years, but yeah.
It's such an odd number.
Should make it forty.
Forty.
Yeah.
Seeing the chief, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, I didn't see his car either, he's probably busy.
Yes, he's been, yeah, poor guy. He had to work Saturday again, too.
Just to you that I can bring this back in any future meeting, so that you can leave with him on the list. I, I don't want to call him away from something.
No, no.
Actually, he knows the beer, so he would be here.
Yeah.
And he was here last Thursday night and gave us an update.
Just haven't come back on another meeting.
Yeah, just give us a brief update. Okay. All righty, so then I announce projects and goals. Come on now, you're the next contestant.
Hi, Reda. So first of all, to answer the Bernie question, it gets percolating. The city manager, because we've got a lot of things on the burner, so I appreciate your indulgence on that. And then the next thing I kind of want to go over, just kind of like the projects, but I kind of want to go quickly on, not that they aren't interesting, of course, but and and use the floor time to be kind of some of the larger capital projects. I also is wanting to introduce, not maybe all of you, Matt, Joshua Stanshaw, he's our new.
Hello, I was wondering who that was.
Yes.
Josh, Joshua.
Do you want to say how it did?
What was the last name?
It's C.A.N.S.H.A.W.
If you don't mind with the rest of council, could, could, could Josh, Joshua come down for a second?
Tell us about himself.
Yeah, tell him a little bit about, if he doesn't, if he doesn't mind, tell us a little bit about his background, we got, we got introduced Friday, so I got to meet him Friday.
So, a little bit about me, I moved to the area when I was still in high school, I graduated from Meyer High School in two thousand and two. Went to school for mechanical engineering, actually, at OIT. That really was my thing. Ended up in public service, I started with Karu Drive in their medical side, I was the operations manager for about three years there for their clinics, and that's where I really cut my teeth on rent management. After leaving Karu, I went over to Quartz Valley Indian Reservation and was their grants and contracts compliance officer. And so I spent almost two years doing that, and then a very brief time before joining the city, I was running their clinic as well, so. But I was excited to be a part of the, the city in which I live, I get to walk to work now.
Awesome.
I appreciate the opportunity to be here, and I really appreciate all of the resources that Reda is giving me and all of the information they have. Sometimes it's a little, but not, not so much that it's, it's, I mean, it's really good paced, and I've really started to some of the, the projects and, and where we're at with them, so I, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Be on board. Thank you, Reda, sorry.
No, it's exciting, and hopefully we can upload some of the work that fell for us on this, like, about this particular site, so. On that, so kind of go through the list, as you know, with that finance as utility billing, and utility billing's kind of been interesting during COVID, as you recall, you cannot turn off customers, so getting compliance on payments, has been calling out, checking on our customers on that, and giving voluntary compliance, we do have some backlog of customers who have chosen both for either financial reasons or other reasons not to pay, but we will be able to resume shut up turnoffs back in September, we're already reaching out to those that are delinquent, doing workout plans for them, extending those up to a year to make those payments, and we expect online to have some physical resources for them through the Great Northern, as you remember, we gave our CD one and two to the EDC, which partnered also with Great Northern, where they can get some assistance for payment help on that. And, you know, there's going to be some write-ups, so we'll probably have to address those, but as a registered Taylor brought to my attention, they're finally realizing this was a burden on smaller municipalities to carry this and our water, and our water districts, so kind of getting on the list is what the state might be doing to help out also that, so for small districts, so hopefully we'll be on the information list on that to see if we can't get some resources or loss revenue. Updating water ordinances is on our list, relating services and billing, it's just on the list, we keep chipping away at it, as I say, there's I can change revisions from thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and now we're up to twenty twenty, so it just needs to get them. We're uploading, updating our webpages currently on, on that, so as soon as we have more resources for customers, we'll get those on the pages where they might get financial assistance aside from the city on that, we're beta testing yet again with Spring Break, the CERIS products, Spring Break was acquired by Sage Systems, so we are, we got enrolled in their beta program, so I want to be at the table, as Joan says, I want the product. So, um, we are, um, we got enrolled in their beta program, so as I want to be at the table, as Joan says, I want, I want the product, you know, I want to have our input um, considered in the product, through design and development. Um, and, um, and part of that is we're working with them to turn on. Um, right now we have it on paperless because of some of the, um, consequences of going paperless on utility billing. Meaning that we don't get a physical representation of the bill here. Um, and we want that before we go paperless and the ability to attach like our newsletter on that. So a little bit, if any questions I need to leave feeling or customers concerned with that, please drop them our way. Um, and, uh, I want to have reach to them. Our department, always a pleasure to work with them. Um, so we've been collaborating, we have our five one C three set up for the membership fund. Um, and with that, we're going to also have to review their ordinances because as they're more a city department than less of the volunteer department, a bit of that fund will kind of help. The fundraising, the good order, um, kind of the community arm a bit, whereas, um, the, um, personnel rules and policies and the Lexapro for the fire department will come under the city administrative side of things. So that's on a horizon issue, I don't understand that for this. I didn't bring John over, but John Ostnaby is our new HR coordinator. And, um, so he, um, is also experienced in HR from, um, the private sector. Um, and came from, uh, Roseburg, lumber there in me, and so we're excited to have him on board. And, um, so anyway, that's kind of on his list to do for that. Um, but he's still, um, working with department, with the department, on kind of providing them administrative support. Because as you know, you've got Jerry and Jerry and Jerry Show. They can be a little added support, because, uh, you know, wants to help and ask him how things are going on that. So he has some administrative, um, resources. Finally, um, this is just on my project to get the burn permits, um, on Civic Plus with geo fencing, so we're out of that kind of another service that people can self-serve and not come to the counter to get their permits. That's kind of out there in the, in the timeline, because it's, it's one of those, it's not urgent, it's, it's not that important. We, as you know, kind of last year had a lot of conversations with Calpers to get our fire safety contract on board, and that was, that, that was finalized and done. And, um, and support from HR to continue with the roots of a volunteer firefighter, since we're still here. Um, business licensing, so cross-training has continued on that, and it's transferred over to Shalani now. I'm just thinking at this point, with business licenses, um, so that, um, Kim, who historically kind of had that role, it's transferred to Shalani, probably it will say the findings, not the community development. Um, so that Felicia, who we hired on for community development, um, coming online for that and cross-training with Kim for building and support for planning processes. I think she's going to be God in that area. Um, and we're very pleased to have her, she's graduated of, um, of, um, North Carolina, David University, I forget which one.
Isn't that another country?
So please, in the office, uh, just, um, stop by and say hello, Felicia was really excited to have her on board. Um, and, um, with building permits, um, at one point, I would love to overhaul that thing. Um, but that's probably going to go beyond, um, my pipeline here, certainly be out there for a couple of years. But, um, that does need to overhaul of the whole ordinance on that. Uh, human resources, is the, is the department? Um, so, um, as the city manager knows, we've got to get the first levels, um, in, under control. We've had it dropped, um, through several iterations, we have a cross, crosswalk with the Lexapro where there are such complex. And, uh, so we're looking at that, and, um, we're going to take, bring Randy Barbieri in and incorporate his ideas and take that, I think, maybe. Needs to happen. Uh, we need to get compensation review, I talked with the finance committee on that. We did a comparison against other cities that have recent ones, that's not going to save us when we go into bargaining in twenty twenty-two. Really need to convert this compensation stakeback by, um, professionals, otherwise it, we will be, um, challenged in going forward without that under our belt. We brought to the unit, the city of Mount Chastis for twenty nineteen, we brought to the unit, the city of Ferndale for twenty twenty. And, um, kind of perfect on that project, so it needs to be done for us as an organization. Um, working, we brought up all the job descriptions on Civic Plus, so if you go there, all of our job descriptions online, that was a deliverable. That's done. Um, continue to improve our HR webpage, work with, um, Civic Plus. Um, this is our further development to get performance reviews and that one acceptance online, um, in the intramit. Um, that'll be up on, uh, Civic HR. Um, and another area where we need to, um, really continue to focus is development and curriculum and training, um, for that, I think. Things change quickly in the public sector, and we need to be aware of all the laws and, and, um, things coming down, so, um, making sure that, um, the department has elected officials, volunteers, committee members, have those trainings under their belt and supported. So.
Can I ask you a question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please, Joan.
Uh, Joan Smith Freeman, City Council member. Rheta, I wanted to ask you a question, you were talking about laws. And HR has very strict state laws, correct?
Uh, they're evolving every year, it has exploded.
But it's, it's getting more and more strict.
Yeah.
Because of lawsuits. So my question to you is, um, for city council members, is my understanding that city council members only, um, have the ability to look at two, um, personnel files, one would be the city manager, and the other would be the city attorney, and anything else that a council member might go into is against the law? Is my understanding, is that true, or is it not? We've heard both sides.
Um, let me get back to you on that.
Okay.
Uh, at this point, I would say, as you know, um, I would say practice would be, though, whether or not there's a statute on that, I'm not aware.
Right, our, our attorney told us that, too.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so.
But, but to know one way or the other.
Okay. Um, yeah. So one other thing, uh, with negotiations, we may have to negotiate cost-cutting measures, just depending on where we are with the financial side. Um, safety, uh, we had talked about, um, transferring some, um, organizational safety training that's specific to public works, perhaps with public works when their staff, not with administration. Because there's an extensive level of knowledge of training staff that people need to go through. And I've talked about that in the past. And, uh, we've got to, we just have a review of our class eight drivers, and, um, we need some overhaul on our class eight driver database. And yet, I could take another thirty minutes on the rules of, like, traffic drivers. It's, it's just exploding. But the good news I wanted to talk about is, um, where we are in recruitment, because it's another kind of turnover happening. So we've recruited and hired two cadence. We've recruited an, um, starting in August, is a wastewater, um, operator three. We've recruited an OIT training for the wastewater treatment plant and a new maintenance worker. Um, and he did, and that maintenance worker came ready to, ready to work and was part of that fire doors replacement project, yeah, so had the construction that came in handy. Um, we hired the building school admin tech, that Felicia mentioned earlier. Um, we have our direct physical rights manager and our new labor coordinator, Josh and John, on board. Uh, police officer, we, um, have a new police officer come in, um, and start yesterday. And so I'm sure, um, Park will speak to kind of the new officers online, there's some work to be done, um, I'll recruit, but MPD, but we've also hired an animal control officer, Trevor, um. Trash truck, I didn't hear a statement right now, it'll loop me, but we have a new, our new animal control Fisher, Trevor Fisher has started. Um, and we have a records supervisor, Jeanne Kincaid, um, and, um, fulfill those positions. So, um, we have the first review of the finance administrative services director. That's, uh, the first review date was last evening. Um, still looking for that, that elusive community fellow director of the key position. Um, we're still looking for a police official, an external maintenance workers. And please, if y'all know, if anybody wants to be community center attendant, send them our way, not going to be any bits on that. Um, internally, we're looking for wastewater, um, a water construction field technician, and she will probably approve that position by contract. Um, with water treatment manager, the water operator. And, um, we've prepared contracts for the inner city manager and protection city authority, the inner police chief. And, um, currently, um, under external recruitment, but it's the, um, city manager and possibly heading for police chief. So that's it. Am I boring y'all or keep going?
No, great.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Debbie's got a question.
And I, regarding the community center person.
Persons, we need, we need bodies, yes.
Bodies.
More than one, yeah.
Upright ones. Uh, I went in and spoke with, uh, HR today, who sent me to Renee, who said, was in front of, uh, our city manager.
Oh, okay.
Regarding me volunteering until someone can assume that position at the community center. But I was told, yes, ma'am?
Just keep in mind, usually they start at eight and end at twelve. So that's a long day, usually one person can't cover.
AM.
AM to midnight.
Okay.
Midnight.
Well, when I was, yeah, that is a long day, and I am an old person. But I was told the right, the proper process was, because I'm doing, would do it as volunteer, was, and it's a conflict of interest kind of thing. I have to go and present the option to the council from there, and then, um, it has to be approved here before I can go to you, correct?
I, I, I wasn't suggesting, this came from me, so I apologize. I was just suggesting to her that she needed to let the rest of the council know this was going on, so that the council's informed what council's doing. Because she is a council person twenty-four seven. Yeah, you guys are stuck with that until you're no longer a council person.
Yeah.
Yes, so unless somebody has an objection to her doing that, then this will be fine. But volunteering, uh, outside of the regular role of council person is what she's asking. Do you all agree that she can do it? And it's not a motion, just consensus.
Oh, okay, okay.
There, there's no conflict, really, it's just.
Just volunteering.
You have image issues about you doing something that somebody else could have done, yada, yada.
Taking away somebody's job.
Right.
Gotcha.
Um, so, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, Joan Smith Freeman, City Council member, and, uh, Debbie, as well as the mayor, I'd like to say that eight AM to midnight's a long day. So, uh, if you're going to volunteer, I would be happy to volunteer with you and maybe split the day.
Oh, that'd be awesome.
Yeah, um, I think it's a great idea, until, you know, we have somebody that's volunteering.
Coming out, that heard out, you know.
Yeah.
Maybe we'll.
Anyway, I'd be happy to work with you.
Thank you.
If they just kind of want to begin or not.
Uh, my concern is I already got a complaint from someone who has, um, rented the community center, and his response, because they called to hire the, the Friends of the Fair Bar, and he pretty much said they're going to try to make sure they have someone, but it's not, you know, it went back and forth, so it's dependent on if they have somebody. Uh, I don't want our community to feel that they don't have the option.
I'll make that clear, thank you for bringing that up. We, Dan Mallor, and I think things on its own offer, if it was over the summer, that maybe we should, um, backfill maybe the summer, their seasonal help, but, um, we'll, we'll try to do, we've, um, some recovered this week, and we're trying to cover with existing staff. Great thing would be, of course, to get some more, even on, on this, um, for these part-time jobs.
Yes.
I just wanted to say it's nice to see Janine Kincaid, Janine Johnson Kincaid back at YPD. She's worked there for years when they were in, over, uh, on Minor Street, and, and, and it's nice to see her back there, so.
Great. Yeah, she was in finance for a while, um, part-time, and then COVID, we had to kind of reduce staffing on the floor.
Yeah.
You know, but.
Are we doing a booth? At the fair, we're not doing a booth up here, are we?
The city is not, no.
I was, I didn't think we were, uh, just, I was, for recruitment-wise, I was just wondering if we, because if we were doing the booth at the fair, it might have been a little late now, but.
Right.
I, we're so short-handed, I don't know how we could anyways, yes, this.
And Debbie and John are already volunteers, they typically work the fair.
Yeah, exactly.
We can't do it.
Yeah, exactly.
We are considering dicks in the poll, and the other thing is a lot of people are hesitant to commit and pay that deposit right now, even though it is refundable. But, um, I'll let them know that we are open for business, be sure.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up. Okay, finance and budgeting. Um, so we're coming into, um, apologies, this is a twenty twenty-one audit that will come in, and always our goal is to minimize, um, reportable finances and assure that we have internal controls in place. Um, at one point, I wanted to find it, migrate our financial statements to a nice online platform. Um, I think that's going to be a success, our project, but it seems some really nice cities that have done, there are, um, you know, there's some great software out there for, um, infographics and financial reporting platforms out there, it's just another project in the list of projects. Um, we have online, um, we're coming into our full year, and just closed on June thirty, so we're already doing July reports that are due, which is the CDVG report versus my annual program, we have the compliance reports for the, uh, asset forfeiture, um, moving right into the Roden Street reports, the audit, um, pre-audit work papers, and, um, then you come in for audit, and you have state control report, and finally issues, financial audit, and that's what I do in the ball. Um, and then we have, um, and this more repeating on this, um, Dr. Randy, we tried to get a master, um, just like we have a master salary scheduled, get a master view schedule out there with all the relevant requirements and releases out there. So, and Randy says, you know, what authority do we have? I can say, well, you know, the tweet, resolution twenty and twenty-one that said such and such. That, um, or twenty eighty-five, whatever. Um, on my backburner list, um, maybe I can get this, I don't know, um, yes, there's some great um, comprehensive financial fiscal policies, policies all combined in one, so right now we got kind of our grants policy, we have our, um, capital asset policy, we have our investment policy. But it'd be nice to get it all in the comprehensive umbrella, um, on that. And, um, we need to review the investment policy with the finance committee and then bring that back to the council. IT, my favorite place, that's where I live, so much of my time. Uh, just again, talking about another area, the philosophy, so I had a really interesting conversation, um, yesterday with both Horizon and Smarsh on, um, basically giving, um, electronic records retention on, um, devices, on emails, on mobile devices. So, um, that alone could take me full time right now, probably for six months to get that in place. Um, it's something we need to address, so, you know, the way, best way to get there is identify the problem, outline the steps to, um, start mitigating and taking, taking those steps. So I'll be writing up a little bit on that, um, it doesn't come free, looking like it'll cost us between fifteen to seventeen thousand to have that in place, but it's required, it's mandatory. Um, on that, so that's kind of interesting. Um, we'll need RFP for IT services up spring twenty twenty-two. Um, on that, um, I'd like to have a comprehensive list, um, in cities in my head, of getting all our system-wide, city-wide applications out there that we're hosting running via the app, via the server base, via whatever we got, and relevant license, the vendor support, um, and all that, um, so we have a comprehensive list of all our IT. Um, out there, so finally, we, um, need to update our replacement schedule. We really did do a lot of replacement, um, was we went from servers to mobile devices, and mobile devices being surfaces, um, or laptops. Um, and we bought a lot of equipment, we recovered part of that under our CB, um, care's allocation. We submitted those costs. Um, so, um, finally, is to set up, um, cost recovery of IT to fully distribute and zero out all the departments because of this support. I'll fail, I'll go a little faster, um, we want to get digitized on that. On sale, I'll go a little faster. Um, we want to get digitized on that so that all our invoices and scans and stuff, when somebody says, uh, can you give me a copy of this check? You know, it's just like click, click, um, into our scan folders. Big project actually on that, um, but, um, Shawnee, who joined us in, um, June of twenty-twenty had just on, um, an SAP implementation project. And that was one of their consistent did to try to share a piece when she was with June well. Um, so I think she'll be a resource there. Um, and on that, moving, um, good at getting into electronic payments for top tier vendors versus physical checks. So one thing we have done, and I think you've noticed in improving tables, is we brought the car procurement. Um, we were kind of already there and we just did the last shift so that everybody could procure off their purchasing card by departments. And so, um, it's really helped us in AP to streamline and not set up all these vendors to issue a twenty-dollar check. It's like it costs us more to do that than to just origin on, on credit card and, and not set up all these ad hoc vendors. So that's, that's been a bit, there are some, some risks from that, but we've been able to, uh, with some patrols there. Grants, um, so we kind of need to update our grants policy to reflect current practice. Just kind of revisiting those fiscal policies, um, need, um, to, now that we're back in subrecipient relationships with the EDCs, um, with those grants versus vendors, there's a whole nother overhead with that. I can give you the book that's about that, federal grants where you have subrecipient relationships. That's why we generally try to avoid them, but we're into that relationship now, so, um, let it go that way. And, um, so that and the other, um, that's a, or had the grant fiscal compliance manager. Um, administrative, um, would like to help with city target picking up some of the administrative duties. Um, Arthur's a busy guy, perhaps admin can help out on some, um, scanning and filing and things like that. We'll see a bit of that. Um, um, Arthur's champion seven plus agenda processing, which is, um, going to be nice. Um, I think it'll really set the standard and consistency in how resolutions and agenda items are prepared for y'all. Because we don't pull up a tomb plate from way back when. Um, and cross-training for fleet services right now, I'm fleet services, cost accounting, and I'd like to get out of that. Um, and setting up re-establishing chargebacks back to, um, one of the ethnics. So cash management, um, as you know, we set up the iPad or pay stations at each desk. So we're helping customers serve themselves and they don't have to come in, swipe your card from our desk. Um, and also for cash management, um, I might need to go back to this finance committee. What we want to do is very, very low rate environment for the excess cash. Um, because I, it's not making any money at night, nor is it making any money on CDs. So we're just in a really, really low rate environment. Um, on that. And we also are setting up another banking relationship with Banner Bank. Um, Banner Bank is doing our interim or bridge financing on the USDA CLP. So USDA will only do the final takeout financing one for the bonds, CLPs when the project's complete. So for that interim from when we start construction to the end of construction on the sewer, um, we'll be working with Banner Bank on that. Um, public works, we want to implement the uniform cost accounting. Um, that allows public works not to, um, have to go out to bid. Is it two hundred thousand now the limit on that? Yeah, um, they're just, we need some better controls on, um, within cost accounting to make sure. And that's with all of these things is, you know, it's great when you say you're going to get cost recovered. But if you don't do the tracking of the hours, the people, the cars and things like that, and you don't have that in place, you aren't going to get the cost recovered. You gotta have a tracking system to recover those costs. And, and we need to be ready for that. Um, and, um, kind of do some outreach and training with, um, both volunteers and public works on the performance cost accountant and cost recovery. Um, so payroll. Um, we've done cross-training on type card entry, um, for increasing support of HR. HR is just, um, snowed down right now. They will come out of it. It's just been a lot of recruitment, recruitment. Um, and, um, when improvements, um, employee leave time and tracking, I think we really need to overhaul that. It goes back to cost accounting. Where are your people? What are they working on? What project? And, and how are they doing the recovery? Kind of, you know, not the most important thing when you're racing off to a wire, racing off to a super overflow. Sagittary super overflow, but you need, we still do have to have that cost circle back on cost accounting and tracking. Um, finally, on revenue development, there's a lot of revenue development ideas. I don't think we'll be able to, uh, go over that, but I think the city really needs to consider, um, not just cost cutting, but revenue development strategies for us moving forward. We'll get into that more with the budget. Um, on that, but that's really planning now for the future, um, seeing where there are opportunities. Part of that is, you know, cost recovery on things, um, and being aggressive on that. Charging for services, I think we do a lot of services play for free still. Um, and we want to recover from those services, you know. So.
Yes, Debbie.
Um, back to the payroll, um, I was trying to catch you between gasp.
She talks fast.
We did, we did have a discussion regarding updating the YPD, um, time card system. Has that been done?
No.
Okay. Is, is that in the future, like before the end of the year?
I think it's, it's a citywide, um, issue on that, if it's, um, what's the best method for that? That just needs to kind of be, it's a project on its own to look at, um, how we do that. You know, I, I'm going to go say there's apps for that. I know there are, but no. When we think there should be apps for that, they aren't quite as well evolved or developed as, as we think they should be. Um, they're bringing those in, but you know, it needs to be as simple as, you know, an here and now, you know, that, that type cards are actually obsolete anymore or, or parts-wise. It's really should be some kind of app, app-based.
Yeah, there is, uh, app-based ones. I know other companies use app-based ones.
Yeah, they should be out there, then, you know, basically layout with the main. Now we need project codes to know where the cost accounting related for that. So it's not only when and where they, when they work, what, what they work on. So it's lots of those that are important for us. Yeah.
Yes, Paul.
Counselor and Paul, okay.
I'm grateful for consulting.
Uh, didn't you already take care of part of the problem? You're not letting them sign all their time cards at once.
I haven't been able to have that discussion with the chief yet.
Cause I think.
The interim chief, but we do need to address that.
Yes.
With them, please add a whole lot of things to address so that hasn't been the highest one. But yes, that is a competition that's happened. Yeah. And also with, um, whenever he's doing the review, because I don't think it's achieved historically, that's the way to it. So, um, and right now that's, um, we've got to act. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a lot of moving pieces here, but it's a, very busy place. So, um, thank you for indulging me on that. Um, and we did, um, dust it together, some of the charts, all that. Not, I haven't had attempts, but kind of, we did bubble by size on all the projects, a couple of projects out there. And, you know, I always like graphics on that. Um, so if, if you want, as I was talking about, we may hand out some charts on that. Um, but, um, a lot of, a lot of separate projects that we need to deliver on those thick thought timelines that we have to meet. So, um, but talk.
Thank you. Do we take a few minute recess?
Yes.
I know it's, uh, coffee's, I think, catching up to.
Go on.
Full recess right now. Thank you. Rena, you need to be.
You've seen a lot of this information over the past years in different various spreadsheet forms. What I've asked staff to do for today's meeting was to break it down to like falling at the top fifty. And I'm going to go through it as quickly as I can. If there are direct questions, answers, you have, we direct those back to Randy so I can update him as well. And we want to be long in depth, because as you know, public works is lengthy and I talk a lot because there's a lot to talk about. So I'm just going to go as quickly as I can through them. Um, first is, I think I'm going to start with the, the spreadsheet that looks like this one. Um, this is our, the top, the top top. So I've got Main Street Sewer. We'll start there. That is the, uh, part of the Caltrans ahead of the job. Um, that bid opening seven twenty-nine. The Main Street Water, also part of the Caltrans job with CDBG. Uh, bid docs with pace right now. We're looking a week or two out to get those bid docs finalized and get that one put out. That'll be our next bid to go. Uh, Prop One East Lennox Water Treatment Plant Filter Project. That's with the state now for the state revolving fund, um, under final review, and that will be headed to bid. Uh, Prop One Sewer, which is still in design with pace. And we've got the Prop One Water Storage and Supply and Storage Project, which includes Davis Well. Um, again, that one's with SRF, State Vol, uh, Construction Grant Agreement is coming soon. I don't have an exact date on that for you. Uh, the Carnegie Building Planning Environmental RFPs for consultants. We've got the Siskiyou Economic Development Council, um, on that one, creating RFPs. Arthur's working the acquisition side. Cindy's working the CDBG side. The chip seal twenty-two-one is coming on us here pretty quick. Um, putting that one out to bid with our RMRA money. That I will dive a little bit into that we are working on memorandum of understanding at this time, right now, with the Corrotride, again, as we did last year. Which last year was the, I think, the first year we got both of us together. They dug into their streets funding, we dug into our streets funding and performed some chip silver. So we are entering into another agreement with the group tribe for that. And I believe the number on that from the tribe side is a not to exceed amount of thirty-three thousand dollars. So it's the roads that lead into tribal lands that we chip seal their city streets, but they're on their tribal tip side of things. So it's a huge win. I said it last year. This is one of our greatest accomplishments is getting the tribe together with the city and we're making roads better. Um, so that one's, that's part of the chip seal twenty-two-one. Community Theater, we, we've got the HVAC that we've spoken of multiple times. Um, that's City Attorney Review. We're looking probably a month before we can get that out, to get that bid out. That was, we had plans that's drawn up this last past year, dusting those off and getting it out to bid. The Creek Maintenance Permit, I believe we're going to be speaking to this at another meeting. Um, but I will touch on it that we have the draft submission from E-COR, who are the environmental consultants that we hired to assist staff in getting this sixteen-hundred together. And that should be headed to the well, seven-thirty. Um, so E-COR's final, we're at the point where it's going to be sent probably tomorrow, next day onto Fish and Wildlife with our payment, which will then start the thirty-year review process to finalize that thing. Um, FHR, we have another meeting set with the SGPGA, I believe this, this month. So I'll dive into that at that meeting, um, in depth for you, but that, I'm still preparing that full report for the FHR. Um, the Green Horn Road Pedestrian Path, another project, bid docs are preparing and getting the bid notice put together. And Pace is reviewing those plans now. It's that project is in front of the substation that we've had recent talks about where the civic power just put the fence in. We removed the homeless encampments there. This project is a driveway approach and a, um, pavement.
I'm loving landing on the roof.
Sounds like, I don't know what that was. So it, it's a simple project of a, a driveway approach into that substation with asphalt from there up to the bridge on that existing trail prison. And it ties the bike lanes downtown with Green Horn Park. Great project. Um, the urban campground, I was speaking with the mayor. I understand there was cleanup this Saturday, a bunch of it done on a public work side. I briefed you the other night about where we are in that, what the timeline was on that. And, uh, Sid, where are you at? So it'll be finalizing the RFP and having Dawn take a look at that. Uh, the drone bus purchase, I'm not really involved in some of these. Um, the drone bus purchase, again, that's, uh, headed to City Attorney for Review, looking a couple of weeks out on that. Best case scenario, probably. The minor street sidewalk, um, that should have been stricken. But it is, uh, it's a project that probably shouldn't be on this list because it's kind of been tabled due to the amount of work that we have on large projects going. But that goes back to a discussion we had a number of years ago about storm drainage. The mayor himself went out there and checked some grades and that kind of thing. So we do need to bring that back up and decide how we're going to program that. Um, so like I say, it probably should have fallen off this list because it's not active right now. But MS four, that's the stormwater regulations with the state, the MS four permit that you've heard me talk about too many times. Um, we did craft an exemption letter and send that off to the water boards. We're in the waiting period to hear back from the water board on if they accept our exception. The way that I read the permit and I sent on to the city attorney for review, he agreed that we should have been exempt from MS four at the beginning. So I crafted a letter and sent it off to the water boards. And that will be the biggest win of my career if it happens.
Yeah.
We're all about keeping our creeks clean and our waterways nice and that, that the stormwater regulations that we are held to at this point, with this permit are deep. So I'll be briefing you on that, hopefully any day soon. Um, they had a six-month review period on that. If this water board does not respond with six months, we're automatically granted an exception.
Oh, awesome.
Oh, good.
I think we're two months in. We're, I wake up every morning with my fingers crossed that I don't get a letter from the water boards. Um, new fire station, that's not really me, we spoke with that with Rena. Um, but also, you know, my staff is, is working, we have Cindy and Arthur, they're working directly with finance on a lot of these projects that aren't particularly public works. Um, the pool, that's, that's all Arthur. That's Arthur's baby right now. We're waiting on the, uh, it's been submitted and waiting on that, uh, to come back hopefully by fall.
Yes, Joe.
And, uh, Arthur could answer this, but the state has come up and physically reviewed our site, correct, Arthur?
Correct.
So that's, um, they, they haven't done that before, so we, we have a little bit of hope on that.
Yeah.
I like that, cautiously optimistic.
We've got South Oregon Street, which is a pavement rehab. Uh, the request for proposals is in the works, getting that into pace. And we hope to put it down by the end of summer. It'd be one of those projects that we're working our best to schedule around and or before sneak it into the Highway Three project because it's a main arterial, more south arterial. And we can't have mass construction on Main and mass construction on Oregon because we cut off. So we're, we're shoehorning that project into all of the design work and staging work that goes with Caltrans Highway Three project.
You skipped the truck, truck stop.
I skipped the refresh truck stop. Um, design and planning, this is another one that Liz alluded to. Um, we spent a lot of time, Liz and I, talking over development things. Um, there's a lot that's not on the table yet for public consumption.
Okay.
Um, but I just, this, this, not that this one isn't, but, um, it's one of those projects that's been around for a long time, Liz and I have spent hundreds of hours each on those types of projects. Um, there's, there's a lot of work that happens in concert with public works and planning. That a lot of it never even hits the table, you know, it's never comes to fruition. So, uh, let me see here, sewer videos, we're out there on the street right now. We have, uh, National Plant is the name of the company that we use to drive the robots up our sewers. Tied back to the Riverwatch agreement that we had when the Riverwatch came through town about six or eight years ago. Uh, we will be completing our visual inspection of the entirety of the sewer this year, this contract right now. So we should probably have a lot, a couple of little pieces we have to go check with our own robot to tie the rest of the data together. But by end of summer, we've done it. And that's a big checkpoint mark off of that Riverwatch agreement because we have a few in that agreement that are reopeners. And we are making sure we hit all of those and meet the, meet all of the points of agreement.
Are these, are these videos going to be available on YouTube?
Um, you, we could. We can put them up there. They're not, they make you a little carsick. Going down a sewer road. It's not exactly riveting, television.
Riveting, riveting.
But the data that we gathered from it is phenomenal because the, the robots, they, they tell us exactly where the crack is, exactly how wide the crack is. They're rated on a condition of one to five. And as per the Riverwatch agreement, we have to fix fives and fours, the worst, almost as worst. Um, so yeah, it's, it's been a very good project and we've learned a lot about our sewer system. Sharps Road, that is part of the Corroped Agreement that I spoke to a little bit, striping and chip seal. Um, that's that thirty-three thousand that. The Tribal Council had agreed to, um, and signed off on that. Siskiyou County Jail Sharps Road, that is a. Kind of a longstanding project that's been going because there's. At one time, the, the county was going to, and I'm not sure it's still their plan, to remodel the. Probation Department out there into the jail, but there's the sewer pipe out there is the flattest one we have in town. It's absolute bare minimum. So we just need, it's a small project, so we're working on with pace to. Try to figure out how we're going to crack that to allow future development to handle that many fixtures. Yes.
Um, I see here, they're also putting in a pub that shows when they remodel.
There's some water and sewer modeling in that in the town that we've been working on, just to make sure we're ready when the things do hit out there.
So my, I, in conjunction to that, um. Water situation, I'm kind of skipping gears on there. Um, but it pertains to that area. Where, where are we at on the water situation for the fairgrounds? So I know there's been huge controversy on that, on water, we have backflows and there's. I know Cliff has mentioned numerous times that there's issues with the water, whatnot. Where do we stand on that issue?
That project is probably in its fifteenth iteration. Um, and where it stands now is that. The, the, the system that runs through the fairgrounds. Was built before the fairgrounds, right? So then they came in and built the fairgrounds on top of city water mains that fed the south end of town. So. It, if you're familiar with the fairgrounds, the, the finish line of the racetrack. The, the home, that last stretch has a city water main that runs right underneath it and it turns a corner and goes over to moonlit. Should have never been that way. It's just, they built fairgrounds out there and they built on top of us, so. That project is the removal of that line from the city infrastructure. It's, it's no longer needed as a feed line to the south end of town, so it's going to be cut off. And treated just as the meter at your home. City has a main out front, you have a meter and it goes in and feeds your home. That's what we're going to do. That's what that project entails for the fairgrounds. And yes, there are ancient backflows out there. They just got tested last week, but our backflow tester came through. But it's one of those that needs to happen. It's not an immediate need because the system works, the system's safe. But it's a project that needs to happen and it's just been drawn on for over ten years now. So we have a fix, we have a designed fix, like I say, that's. I guarantee it's at least the twelfth iteration of design on that thing that I sit down with Pace. So let's try this, let's move that, move that. As the years go by, the projects change, but it is safe, it is clean drinking water provided by the city of Warrick. We just have a main line that runs through the state woman property, which is not ideal.
Well, isn't there some other lines that come into the fairgrounds? Because I was told there's other lines that come into it. It's not just that one main that actually. Ties into it with another angle too. That's why there's such a big controversy.
Right, well, all of our, all of our, without going too far, um, our city water system is a looped system. So it's fed not only from one way. If you have a water meter, you're catching water from two or more directions. So that's standard, that's how we maintain pressure, right? And redundancy for, we have an outage on this, we can turn that valve off and still feed the majority of town. But, so there is water, there's a line that comes through it and goes up to moonlit, water flows both ways through that line. But there are a private line that comes off of that system that heads to the south. Which is an issue in that project because that house is right on the city limits, but it was tied in when the fairgrounds was built. So that's a removal, that's a part of that project where we have to extend the water main and pull it up the driveway. So it's, it's not a massive project, but it's a finicky one. Yeah, it's just every time we look at it, we find another little finicky bit that we need to. So that's that. Uh, ADA restaurants, we've talked about multiple times. I'm not exactly sure what direction you will take on that project, but I think we're all up to speed on where it was conceptually. Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what City Hall ADA Restaurant Remodel.
And I think there was some concern about the match on that, um, from the, and where that would come from, but.
Yeah, well, I think we all put it on, if I'm correctly, correctly, is we, uh. Put on hold with the whole beginning of the COVID thing, that's when we put a kibosh to that at that time and didn't pursue it any further. When we got into the first stages of COVID, I think we all were concerned about finances and where we'd be on that, so I don't know.
So that, that is included in the budget that, that project kickstarts again.
And Reda makes a point there that shouldn't be missed is that the, the match for this CDBG. Or the funding to, to do, perform the remodel. Our water and our sewer are enterprises, they don't function without this building. So the match is coming from the enterprise.
Okay, good.
Or wood. Uh, Arby's, we have it there, it's been spoken to a little bit, I think Liz spoke to it. Um, either today or the other day. Yes, we're ready to go. We've been working with Caltrans. And the, the Arby's engineers, because it fronts Highway Three, there's not a lot of. Direct, you know, sidewalk curb gutter improvements that the city required, but Fred and I have been working with their engineers and helping them through the. Working in concert with the Highway Three project, which is coming. So helping the developer work with Caltrans and get their timing now. So they're, they're gonna, they're green lighted through Caltrans. Last I heard, they were headed towards approach permits. They're trying to give us money for approach permits right now. They're a little bit ahead of the ball because they don't have final, final plans to sign off yet, but it's coming, it's happening. Skate park, Ben and his crew have been working on that. It looks great. Last week when I went out there, they had the half pipe built. I think they still needed to paint it. We had a slurry coat put down on the asphalt after our crews went in and, and cut out the big cracks. Re, re-asphalated everything. And then we've had a local contractor come in and put a slurry coat down to make it. Uh, even smoother. So it's extremely skateable. We're going to do some other fixes to the pieces that are there, the quarter pipe and the slide boxes. But it, there's kids stopping by there every day talking to the guys, when's this going to be ready? Because it's been twenty-five plus years since there was a public half pipe in this town.
It was, it was Steve who turned me loose with Matt and Ben and Ben went right to town and Matt, you know, got Meeks called and. Asked if they could help in any way with, uh, materials for donating, so that was great. So it just went really fast and I'm very happy. I could, you know, when you see it, you know, you drive by it every day and you kind of deal with something, but. After they did it, you didn't realize how bad it looked.
And they just debuted in the Olympics.
It's way bigger than I thought it was going to be. I really didn't think it was going to be that big. I, and when I put it, I was like, oh my gosh. Looking, even adults that are skateboarders were out there looking, so it's going to, it's going to have a lot of, um. Interest and so it's exciting to see something improved. That's going to be, I think it's going to be well-used even way before.
Yes, good job.
Thank you, yeah.
Especially for letting you stand on and skateboarding, when that first female skateboarder.
Yes. When's that going to open? Not the gold, the, um, the repair, do you know when it'll be finished? Ben's on the line, maybe he knows.
The skate park?
Yeah.
Ben, can you unmute?
I think I'm unmuted now.
Question Ben was, when will the skate park be open?
We, we will get back on it either this afternoon or tomorrow morning. We didn't have personnel to be on it either yesterday or today, uh, because of. A lot of water leaks in our system.
Probably have it open, painted up and open and ready to skate by the weekend.
Weekend's the goal, um, if, if we could have it absolutely completed by Friday and have it open by the end of the day of Friday.
All right, that would be, that's what we'll work toward. Understanding that we have, as Ben mentioned, this time of year, we, we really. Citizens start using more water and, and the pipes, like I call it, they start humming. And we start springing water, it's just the sheer volume through the system. So.
Thank you, Ben, this is Councilman Middleton. Thank you so much for all your working with your staff. I haven't had a chance to see you, but thank you so much for everything you've done.
Yes, good job, Ben.
I think it's a really great project and I, as you said before, it's, it makes you realize. Um, it came up better than I thought it would, so it's, it's a great project.
Yeah, it's awesome.
Awesome.
Especially for a project that was just about going to be dropped completely, now it's rejuvenated and going to be used, so it's.
Good thing for the kids. They can go for the gold.
So back to the development side a little bit, the housing on foothill, I've been working with Liz a little on that one. It's not really fully in my court yet for design stuff. The Service Center Water Project is not good news. We had a water leak that was discovered through billing. And, um, we opened it up, this was last year, we opened up the, down at the yard. Found the water leak, fixed the water leak, went back on with life, didn't realize there were multiple other water leaks. Ben has about three hundred feet of trench opened up right now in the yard. All of the, pretty much all of the water under the city yard, building sixty-four and thrown in and. You know, we go fix other people's water leaks, we never get back to our housekeeping, but we found it now, we're replacing that, so it's a nice. Upgrade.
Yeah.
But it's not something we necessarily wanted to be doing. So Ben's shorthanded on that too because he's got two guys working that, two guys on the skate park. Fumbling right now, trying to get it back in lines to get some of these projects done, so we can get the streets crew reassembled, thrown back out there while it's still hot. Um, I'm going to skip over ground shields because that's not really my gig. Bridge of Prayer at Greenhorn Park, this was asked by, I believe, Councilman McCoy for the lower bridge. I spoke before about the sourcing of the, the Southern Yellow Pines that would match the other bridge. Um, lumber's still a little difficult to get right now. We're, we're being told that stuff comes only from the east coast and they can't get it right now. So we may just need to go forward, get the, get the, the costs put together and bring it to you and have you decide if we want to go forward with.
Thank you.
The other, I just. Matchy-matchy, I wanted it to look like the other.
Yeah.
Uh, but if it's not possible right now due to vendor sourcing, then it just won't be. Uh, the Greenhorn Park Kiosk is in need of a roof. It's one of those small projects that Ben has been working on, trying to figure out how do we build it? How do we fix it? The little gazebo area, it's got cedar shake shingles on it, needs to be replaced. It's just another one of those parks projects where we don't exactly have the manpower or the funding in the parks this summer to do it. But we have to catch it, uh, before it's too far gone.
Are we not going to use the bacon? There's, there's money that, that, uh, Nancy Bacon left for enhancement of the park of Greenhorn.
Right, when that, that donation was made, um, I spoke with Nancy about where she would foresee that going. And because of who her husband was and his his, his love of history of the city and that. And we brought forth the, the stamp mill. As would that be something you would like us to, to work on with your money? And she said yes. So in my mind, that money is earmarked for stamina, because that's what Nancy and I spoke of. So, so we have other repairs in the parks.
Yeah.
I will, I personally am not going to make the decision to use the bacon line on anything but the stamp mill, who's disgusting.
No, that's fine, because the stamp mill needs a new, we.
It needs a lot of work.
Roofing that matches.
Correct, and then, that's been the plan, go find an old barn that has period correct. And you know, if anybody sees any old corrugated roofing, it would work, let us know because that's, and then again, it'd be another one like we did with the clamps, the clampless virus. And the SGPGA and our staff and Ben and I were on the weekends volunteering our time because it was fun and we, we helped them rebuild the assay office. We had plans for the blacksmith shop. Um, it's an ongoing project. Dave Franklin did the, uh, Erastro Wheel, I mean, just amazing projects that were happening out there, so. That's how I see that for, that happening.
Thank you.
Get back in concert again with, it's like the clamp's virus, SGPJ, our crew go out there and use that money. Uh, then special events, Arthur's got all kinds of special events, so I'm going to get off of this public works one and jump into the projects for City clerk municipal projects manager. She gave you. Yeah, these are more, because Arthur works for me and you, um, in two different roles. I'll just take it. So he's got the EDA. Uh, the grant for two hundred and twenty-five thousand for the COVID nineteen study. Working on that, we've got the California Parks and Rec Per Capita Program, which was a hundred and seventy-seven thousand. Um, working the Parks and Rec statewide park, applied for the eight and a half million aquatic center. Um, we discussed that a little bit, hoping to hear back on that from September to August. Special Events Liberty Arts Data Schedule on Friday, the thirtieth, July thirtieth, shutdown there, um. Rotary's got the scenic bike tour, May sixth and seventh, whatever, Greenhorn Park. Warrick High School's got the cross-country meet, September seventeenth at Lower Greenhorn Park. Liberty Arts has another one on the second with the street closure. Between Liberty Arts and Main Street meets, they're going to show up that North Broadway section down as they did last year. Uh, Arthur's cranking away on all of these, this is a lot, that's a lot of work to keep these types of events together. And we're lucky to have Arthur on these. Planning Commission appointments, you've got two pending vacancies that have been announced publicly, the sound system in the chambers, Reda bought some microphones. Arthur and I started trying to plug them in the other day, we want to make sure it's right. We had a meeting that night, so we just.
Yeah.
We're waiting, we'll be plugging that in.
Are we, are we looking at speakers for acoustics?
Speakers?
Yeah.
These are brand new speakers last year.
They, you can't hear a darn thing when you call in.
Well, the, the call-in issue is coming through this microphone and your microphone. And the, that style of microphone is a condenser where it, it's just a different style. It's supposed to pick up to the whole room. And so we have issues with those, we've always had issues with those. Those work fine if we turn them up in this room. For folks here to hear it out of the speakers, but they're not the microphone for throwing it to Zoom. So Reda bought these. These stands, they're condenser mics like this one. And so that'd be. Talking into a microphone instead of sitting back, because those don't pick you up if you're not within three feet of them.
Be heard. I cannot hear anybody on it. I've done four or five meetings on Zoom and I can't hear that. It's not just the microphones, it is, it is the speaker system itself.
The wiring.
These are, these are, these are speakers, they're great for at home, they're great for Muzak, they're very ineffective for, for speaking. They don't have the range, they don't have the.
Oh, it's being replaced also.
Oh, good.
Yeah, I think you're going to find. That it's, it's, it's. I think you're going to find that it's speakers more, as much as the microphone, just from, you know. I don't know, the speakers type. So I would buy things that are compatible. I would, I don't know who you're working with, but I would work with a company. That is, is going to be, be able to buy things that are compatible. Are these unidirectional Omni? What are they?
These are can, like a true condenser mic, like this one, where you should be right within the bubble of it. So we can, we can turn up the gain on it and get it so you're sitting at your table, you don't have to be right on the microphone.
So that's not an Omni.
These are better than these condensers, which that, that microphone's picking up everything in this room.
So, so that's not, that's not an Omni, and that's probably a unidirectional, it's not one you would use for music?
Yeah, this is like an SM, like a Sure SM fifty-eight, it's, it's a copy of an SM fifty-eight, which is a vocal mic.
Yeah. Which you have to be right up on it in order to, yeah.
So the room was designed for no microphones.
Right.
The room is designed architecturally to sit up there and people here can hear you. These days, we have, we're pushing through Zoom, so we need a clean signal through this into the computer. Every one of those is cleaning the computer and out, and it, it'll be fine.
Well, and it wouldn't hurt to line the walls, the brick walls, because the brick walls are going to swallow everything. That's what I'm saying. I, I don't think you're going to. Solve the issue with the mics. I think it's, you're going to need speakers and I, I hesitate to spend the money on something. Get it halfway done and then realize that we have to. I'm not picking on you, Matt. I'm just saying, this is something we've talked about, does it count? Go ahead, John. But I think we'll just, one of those things, give it a try and we'll see what happens.
I have, I have a question, if I may. Ben? Can you unmute Ben, please? Ben, you are the only person on, uh, on Zoom right now. How are the acoustics? Can you hear everyone?
Uh, it is not bad, uh, as long as the person at the podium. Stands close to the microphone, it's pretty good. Um, on my system, I, there has been three times throughout this meeting, there's been a delay in video and audio. But that's probably my internet connection.
Yeah, could be. Okay, thank you, Ben.
You're welcome.
I, when we do the city hall remodel for EDA, I really would want to include. Acoustics and sound systems in that. Makes sense. Just as you're doing that while we've got the building opened up.
Right, that makes sense. Well, and these, these, these bricks are the worst thing to have for. Makes sense, though.
So back to Arthur's list, he's got the agenda template revision, civic clerk, this is spoken to already by by Rhonda, the website management. And he's, you know, constantly taking public records act requests, and as they come in and claims from the public, as those come in, so. That's it in a nutshell, Rhonda and Josh came up with.
Wait, page two?
Agenda software.
Page two of that one I just went over. I just flipped over it because it's already been spoken to, civic clerk that Rhonda spoke to, the agenda software system, the website management. So, pretty cool little bubble thing, we gotta get some drops. Bubbles are great, so we've got the public safety projects kinda showing here. The cops grant one fifty, Prop one seventy-two, fire station planning at two hundred fifty thousand, water tender four hundred thousand. Summit DOJ stuff, four thirty-three, second page of Streets and Stormwater projects. Got the stip on paving and stuff on South Oregon that I spoke to, and we're getting prepared now. A two point three million to fix, and that's basically, if you don't recall, from thin walls. Auto chop there at the corner, all the way down that alligator section in South Oregon. It's big projects, been failing for years, so it's great to get that one on the ground.
Which end are you gonna work on first on that? I know, you said you coordinated with the project with Caltrans.
It's gonna be a last minute kind of decision through the staging of that, because by the time we get all of our ducks in a row for what day we're gonna start. And Caltrans is gonna start, because they're still moving their regions around, so we're just gonna work as we go to make sure that we have. North-south through it all the way, we may need to just do half of it, shove the traffic over and come back through and do half, but we're just gonna keep it open. However, we can stage it, keep it open. Right, we've got seven or eight different regions, but you know, those are always subject to change. You know, through scheduling and. Any number of things that happen, so we're just keeping that in mind, that we're going to make it work. Yeah, it'll be a fun construction. Storm drain project up Yama Street, Greenhorn striping. Stormwater retention grant. HR, go to water projects, get the CDBG that I spoke to right at the beginning of the list, five point eight four one million dollars. Three point two five of that's CDP grant, State Water Resource Control Board, water collection improvements, another five and a half million dollar project. We're putting on the ground. Waste water projects, we got the main street sewer I spoke to, that's the six point six million dollar bubble. And then the wastewater collection system improvements, another five point five million dollar level. Hitting hard and fast, then the community development stuff, which is not really my side of things, we've got the Carnegie Rehab, the EDA, Ringing Pool Infill. When that comes around, the drone senior bus is a hundred thousand, I think that's coming to completion here pretty soon. I spoke to the community theater HVAC, which was engineered estimate two hundred fifty thousand dollars to get that fixed up. Browns Fields and the city hall remodel that we spoke. If you have. Further questions on that, as I asked, please contact me. Randy and I, we will clarify, and we're at, there's lots more, like I said, this is a top fifty, I don't wanna be up here all day. So, is there anything I can ask, answer now?
A question from council at this point in time.
On the spidered area worth of the of of South Oregon, Matt, where the mill used to be? Will, are are is are there plans you think will pace or whoever designed it, have us excavate down to get down to some more solid?
Yes, there's a section of South Oregon from Greenhorn. On, as you're driving behind the new Warrick Motor Shop on that really bad section. That section of roadway is sitting on top of an old mill pond. The Sharps Mill was once there, and when they built the road, they didn't build a road, they just backfilled the dirt and paved it. So we don't have a road bed, we have pavement. Totally different, you can build a road bed, the prism, it's three feet deep with big rocks, and it's gonna be there with drainage, proper drainage on it. And that's why it failed, because it's sitting on top of an old mill pond that's underneath, which is full of sawdust, which is full of water. So that section, we had a hydraulist come in two years ago and perform. We we dug wells and put piezometers that recorded the water table to know what we were dealing with. Bottom of that canyon, think about it, you look at bottom of Greenhorn Canyon, that water has been doing this for millennia. And the creek has moved however many times, and so there's water down there, it's not coming from the dam, there's water there, because it's the bottom of the canyon. So we have that designed to drain that, to dry out that section of road bed, take it down to Hartford, and you know, fill it back up, it won't fail.
The drainage of that street was never properly done anyways, again, when they pushed the street through back in eighty-two. The street through, they never designed the the stormwater drainage to actually go in place.
Right, it doesn't. It takes a very slow route down to the corner, ride the car wash, and then eventually makes it out of there. The whole area pumps water every time we have a big rain, it shoots out of the ground. The buildings out there are floating on their foundations, the doors don't open and shut very well. That is all I have.
All right, any other questions? Alrighty. Is there anything else to add?
No, not at this time, other than we'll deal with getting the police chief to make his presentation to you. And the one thing that was highly noticeable to me, after all of this, was not one department had listed homeless as a project. You're aware. They don't feel they've been assigned to work on that.
Okay, well, that's good to know, I didn't even think about that, but we actually have.
That's you.
I need to think about that.
Yeah, yeah, actually, you do this.
So, yeah, keep giving me your projects on the homeless, and I'll make sure that we assign the appropriate staff and work on them. But it was just a surprise to.
And I'm glad you brought that up, because because of our big focus right now, obviously, is the is the urban campsite, which. Has been, we just started cleanup, you know, we did cleanup on Saturday on that, and there's gonna be a lot more projects in the future. So I guess that would pertain to more public works than anything, I guess.
But there's no, you know, that's really not public works, it's really not anything else, it's gonna have to be a little bit of. Everybody working on that to figure it out, and and your city attorney is spending some of your money on that too, and he's providing very good information. But it's a, I don't think anybody has an answer issue, so.
And that may be a surprise to you, but it's not necessarily a surprise to me. That nobody was assigned it, that's, I won't say any more than that, but that's, it may be a surprise to you, but. I can see how it never got assigned.
Mister Mayor, I just wanted to point out that Matt, on his report, had urban campground. He was the only one that had it listed under public works. Just that one.
Well, I don't think there's been anything, you know, really directed, I mean, we obviously have this, this urban campsites. It's now a huge direction that we're trying to. To streamline as quickly as possible. But that's, you know, up to this point, it's kind of been all over the place.
I think the former city manager kinda hung on to it himself, as far as when I met with him. You know, cuz, you know.
Well, yeah, I was thinking, I think there was some hopes in that, that there was wasn't going to grow the population that we have now, so.
Because I've been meeting with him since the start, since part of. So I'm at regular. But that's, again, neither here nor there at this point in time.
So, a couple days ago, I sent our city attorney a list of about seven or eight questions regarding the homeless. And Idaho ruling and our. To clean up some of the gray areas that I had, he did respond, I do have answers, I can forward it to everybody. One of them was, are we responsible for a temporary urban site, and the answer was no, so.
Let me clear up on some of those, his answers.
Okay, let me finish. So the main thing I wanted to put out there was. The extra, the additional expense we're going to incur to. Create a temporary site. Which would only be used for a short period of time. I want us to discuss whether or not it's justified throwing money down a rabbit hole for two weeks a month, that kind of thing. And also the discussion. That was created when I asked, what liabilities are we going to incur regarding asking. A private property owner to allow us, regardless of how much. Insurance and signatures and contractual agreements we have. And and that's pretty extensive also, so I will forward out his responses, because. I think we need to be a little more objective about how hard we're working for what period of time.
So clear up some of that, Don's response, because I did, that was the one reason I tried to call you last night, to clear up some of his responses.
You didn't answer after eight thirty.
Anyways, with regards to. The requirement of having an alternate. Location, just like your comment you're asking about, no, we don't necessarily have to have an alternate place to go. But if we don't have a place for them to go, then they will still end up in our parks, they'll end up in the greenway. Because we do not have a specific place for them to go, so that's the clarification that Don didn't specify in this little email. That, yeah, we don't have to, but then that's not gonna solve the problem on where they're going, we still have to have a place for them to go, that's that's the part he didn't clarify. Another one that he said on outer locations, he's referring to as in, and this is stuff that we're just gonna bring up later. There is some clarification that he's not, he's not a hundred percent clear on what he's telling you. I can, I totally see where he's alluding to these things, one, he's talking about county's responsibility. That's if we do any type of housing, or any low-income housing or any of that stuff, that's what he's talking about as far as being able to take them out of town or something. That's not us, we, if we have any place, we still have to have the responsibility of doing, having some way to not. Put on a burden on them, so there is, you need to go back to the first statement of what the Boise decision is. And that's the most clarification on all of this whole thing, some of the other stuff that Don was talking about. He's not, he's not understanding the direction that your question that you're giving him, I know for a fact.
You'll see the list of my questions.
I read them all last night, that's why I tried to call you, because I was trying to clear up some of those questions, he's not understanding the question that you're presenting him. Totally not, so, and because we are such a litigious state or society. The other thing that he's not clear on is that, yes, we might have problems putting them on a private site, but if we don't have a place to put them. We're gonna end up like Medford, and undoubtedly, Medford's gonna pay probably between four and twelve million dollars in. And not just in litigation fees, but in 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 damages for moving their homeless out of the. Out of the greenway without a place to put them, they have no place to put them, and and that's the biggie, and if we're, and we're looking at, we're we're moving them because of fire danger. We gotta have a place to put them, that does not, that that we're we're, because we're trying to mitigate fire danger, we have to have some place to put them, even if it is for. I know for sixty-nine days, it is a lot, it's it's a, it's a no-win situation for us all the way around, both from the public standpoint, from. A money standpoint, it's it's gonna cost, it's gonna cost us either way we go, and if we have a fire up there, it's gonna cost us even more in life and limb. And and that's why you you can, you can do fire mitigation, you can have these fire mitigation projects that are legit. And you can move them to, but you can't, if you just tell them to disperse without giving them a place to go. Then you can be liable, and that's what, that's what Don did not clarify, that's why he originally went back to what the ruling was. On that whole thing, what he read, what he can get a list of the ruling was, and need to really clearly read that first, what he went through on that. That will totally clear up any other questions that you may have on all those other questions, because, like I said, we, you can, like I said. Kick them, move them from one location, but if you don't give them a location, then they can end up right back, they can live, they can move right back next door. Where you just moved them out of, literally, unless you have another location for them to go to. It's like, I've done enough studies on this to know what our legal rights are and stuff like that, and Don's absolutely right on this, but you gotta read between the lines of what he's saying. He's not wanting us to get in trouble, but there is, if you do certain things, you will get in trouble, guaranteed, guaranteed, so.
So does the council, the rest of the council want me to forward the information?
Yes, I'd love to see it, thank you.
It recognizes the Boise decision that the city will dedicate additional funds. To preventing any homelessness, so, I mean, it sees that we're, I get, they're expecting, it's an unfunded mandate.
Yeah, exactly, that's exactly what amounts to, it's an unfunded, another one of those unfunded mandates that that. State and federal government.
We we've seen him in education.
Don did send this out to all of us. Debbie Baird, Randy Johnson, Corey Milton, Paul McCoy, plus two at that point.
Plus two, you mean it came to the rest of us?
When Don sent that to you, he also sent it to the rest of the council.
That's what he just said. I haven't seen it. When did it go out?
Yesterday, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
That's okay.
It gives strategies.
Monday, Joan, Monday, he says, so it's it's like, it's, for me, it was four emails ago.
Anyways, okay, anything else, council?
Just to finish up on this, so did you respond in email forms that we all saw it, so he could discuss? You both could discuss the both sides of the argument.
Oh, no, I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna talk to Don.
Okay, but I'd like something in writing.
Oh, no, absolutely, no, I'm gonna definitely have him do some clarification on this, because he's definitely not. Being clear to the rest of the world on how this works.
I think he is clear, though, that it is, can get very messy when you involve a public-owned property, and when it comes to. A city having a loose under, or an agreement under a private property. And for us to go to get to move them, he said it's very messy, it's not that we're gonna be able to say, you gotta go, and they say, oh, no, it's private property, I'm gonna stay here. And then they have to evict them. And go through years, it could be years, and thousands of thousands and thousands of dollars. And court fees, attorney fees. That we will pay, that could get very.
Yeah, on the private, on the private spectrum.
So that is, he is very right on that.
All the other questions. Definitely some clarity that needs to be brought up on that, so anyway.
Okay, so the council's okay with the mayor talking to the city attorney about that, correct?
Yeah, they emailed back to us.
As long as the response, his questions and the response comes back to all of us. Please.
I I'm just saying that because you're gonna incur cost, talking to Don.
Streamline, so everybody understands the, what he was talking about, what the question was in his mind, for sure, so, absolutely. Okay, anything else?
I just, I wanted to let you know that I'm just forwarding you the meeting reminder. Remember, I told you that our division is having a quarterly meeting, the last one that's going to be on Zoom this Friday. At. League of League of California Cities, but our Northern California Division, noon to two. And so there's some good things on there, update. Most welcome, the the City of Anderson is actually hosting it, the last one was supposed to be hosted by the City of Reading, but of course, during COVID. They've all been come Zoom, but this is the last one, but there's going to be a presentation of council conduct. Importance of Council Code of Conduct by Melissa Cunha, Institute for Local Government, which I think should be really interesting. So I'm sending it out to everybody. Friday, this Friday. This Friday, July thirtieth, twelve o'clock to two.
All right, anything else?
Thank you for putting this together.
Thank you, everybody. This was very, very, very informative for me, so thank you.
Yeah, that's, it's good, I just, I like I said, the main thing is why we want to do this is for open lines of communication. We definitely need to break those, so everybody can do their last thing, but thank you, everybody, it's. We definitely need to break those, so everybody can do their last thing, but thank you, everybody, it's, it was very informative. All the soulless of knowing what's going on, did something that I know all of us, I guess I can't speak for everybody, but I think everybody was. Still the same way that we need this uh information blasted at us every once in a while, so we can keep on top of it to know what's going on. And know how much work you guys are actually doing, because you guys are doing a, a pile of work, and there's a lot of stuff going on that we sometimes, as council, forget, so.
Yes.
We just thank you all very much, so.